Okay, it is 7:30. I'll call Aeneas Gordon and ask him to rise and join me in the We have the minutes of the July 14th, January 14th meeting before us. The motion in a second, any discussion? No, no, all those in favor? Opposed? Supervisors, month in a report. The month of January, we had revenues of $307,732. Appropriations were $47,942.33. General fund checkbook balance has $142,559.29. Highway checkbook balance is $132,557.6. DNA account has $5,902.59. Water District Number One with $1,331.94. And the Cemetery Restoration Account has $3,144.80. And you have my court sheet, which looks kind of bare at this point. It'll grow. Okay, we've got a few minutes before our public hearing, so is there anyone that would like to address the board from the floor? All right, we've got some communications. I have the excess collateralization from the Bank of New York for MDT. I've received a couple of letters here that really have to do with our zoning ordinance change, but I'll very quickly read through them. This one was dated the 6th of February. It's to Supervisor Wilcox and Councilman Jerry Locke, Alan Davis, Ron Charles, and John Hoffman. As you have heard many times, the primary purpose of zoning, as noted in Article Two of Section Two of the Act of Zoning Ordinance, is to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of this community. This means the entire community, the entire town of Oxford. It just does not mean just those in residential district. Those possibly zone out the industrial effects of traffic, pollution, noise, and disruption of the landscape. The Board is charged with a commitment to municipal lawmaking based on community rights, the right to protect our health, safety, and welfare, our right to sustainable and just community. I cannot fathom any justification for the proposed zoning changes that would allow for drilling of gas or oil. And material staging areas vaguely defined as temporary material stage by special exception in the agriculture and commercial districts or anywhere in the town. Do you have any idea what materials the Town Planning Board would approve? Does the Town Planning Board have any expertise in this area? Why would we need to have material staging areas? The only reason I could surmise is for the development of gas and oil, drilling pipelines and compressor stations. It's disappointingly clear that the proposed zoning changes favor gas development any form we can get. I have lost faith that the Town Board members will do anything to protect the residents or properties of the town. Public opinion, that is, against gas drilling and material staging areas is repeatedly ignored. I urge you to prohibit drilling for gas and oil and related material staging areas in all districts of Town of Oxford. Sincerely, Pat Patricia Cole. This man has to be putting down records. And another one dated the 8th of February. This is to Lawrence Wilcox, Supervisor of Board Members Jerry Locke, Alan Davis, Ron Charles, and John Hoffman. With regard to proposed changes of zoning, Town zoning laws. Your Supervisor Wilcox and Board Members, Mrs. Locke, Davis, Charles, and Hoffman. I'm writing to you with regard to your proposed changes of the Town zoning laws. These changes are so that the Town of Oxford would allow fracking and drilling of gas wells in the event that the current New York State ban on fracking is ever rescinded. The voters of the Town of Oxford entrusted you to look out for the welfare of the town now and in the future. The most important asset the Town of Oxford has is its pure and potable water. If you allow fracking in the Town of Oxford, you are jeopardizing the town's most valuable asset. I wish I could make you, wish I could take you to Montrose, Pennsylvania to see what the drilling for gas wells and fracking has done to that town. Montrose, Pennsylvania was once a lovely little town in Montrose, Oxford. Today it's ruined, it's a ruined town because of the gas wells and fracking and unfortunate elements which go along with gas drilling, drilling through gas. Montrose, Pennsylvania's water supply has been ruined. Citizens can no longer drink their water. Montrose looks like a very desperate ghost town. It's now inhabited with very undesirable transit, stringent, who have come to work on the gas wells and fracking. I know that the same will happen to Oxford if drilling for gas wells and fracking as well in the Town of Oxford. Some of you have gas stations on your own property or the property of your relatives. You and your relatives believe that you are hardworking people who deserve the financial rewards which you would receive from gas wells and fracking on your property. However, no amount of money is worth the possible contamination of precious forests. Please listen to your constituents in proposed gas drilling and gas, drilling for gas and fracking in Town of Oxford. Thank you for consideration. Sincerely, Mr. Antonio. Who was that, Lawrence?
Christina Van Graan. Obviously, everybody saw, I don't know if you did or not, but there was a editorial on the paper tonight that was much in the same light, only probably more derogatory toward us individually. I really don't understand why people think that what we're doing, these proposed changes, have anything but to protect the Town of Oxford. At some point, whether it be two years, five years, 20 years, natural gas drilling is going to be a reality in New York State and in Oxford. The changes that we're proposing give the Town of Oxford an opportunity to have some kind of a say in that industry. I don't think that when, when New York State decides to allow gas drilling, whether it be with hydroelectricity or not, it won't be time to develop zoning areas. We've seen what it's taken to make these changes. It won't be the time to get that in place. I think that we're doing, we're very proactive in trying to protect the Town of Oxford. I just sincerely feel that people that have these feelings don't understand what we're
I kind of get the concern.
May I, may I ask, was that, was that a letter or was that a statement by the supervisor just now?
That was a statement.
By the supervisor?
Yes.
I just get the feeling that everyone is, feels that we're still open, opening ourselves up to the oil and gas development in the area. There's two ways of looking at everything. One, the material staging area. We said that that was brought in so that we would have control, some sort of say. There's, I think some people see that as the zoning ordinance the way it is, if you don't mention it, we still have the same control. So you've got one side saying that, okay, you're opening yourselves up, it's looking like that, you know, you want it. You want to bring in the oil and gas drilling, the material staging areas. The other side is saying, agreeing with your intent to put it in, that now you do have some say by having it in there, you have some, some type of say, and you've restricted it to the commercial areas and agricultural areas. So it may go back to Mina's question or her letter a couple of times requesting that we actually get some type of a statement in writing from the lawyer saying that these points are enforceable, legal and enforceable, you know, before we actually go ahead and vote on the actual changes that we've made. Now, it was very obvious after the last meeting that once the state, you know, upheld the ban for high-volume hydrofracking, that they couldn't believe that we were going ahead with this, the changes. Now, I was looking at it that most of these changes will still apply to normal, normal zoning. You know, noise ordinance is good. Taking the telecommunications tower, putting it from the law into there is good. The material staging area is, is the big question. Now, I look at it as, until this oil and gas industry kind of uses it, they kind of piggybacked on it. I mean, for years, material staging areas applied to construction projects, and that's what it actually is. And so by, you know, I was kind of relieved with the state, you know, saying the ban that, that we weren't going to have to deal with that right now. I didn't see a point in stopping what we were doing with the zoning changes because it's still applicable. Now, my intent is that we're getting, you know, we are protecting the people, you know. Now, have we gone far enough? That's, that's debatable. I hate to lose, I hate to, you know, just drop it and, you know, we took gas and oil drilling out of the, out of the residential areas. But is that strong enough? You know, I asked the question, I didn't get, that's another, you know, which might in writing we need to get from the lawyer. But if we mean that, then why don't we say prohibit? And then you have the other people who are not in the residential areas who feel that they should have, be afforded the same safety, you know. So most of the people here, they're not going to be happy unless it's prohibited within the whole town. So, you know, it's kind of gets us in a hard, a hard place, you know. We're trying to do the right thing, but at the same time, we're not, I don't, I see that we're not going to make everybody happy.
Well, I agree, we're not going to make everybody happy. That's, that's a given. But Ron, in our conversation, in our work session that you and I sat down with a lawyer, and you addressed exactly that. And you, you asked him those questions, and he, he addressed it at that time. And as far as any legal thing, you know, there's nothing set in stone in, in laws and regulations and legalities until some judge makes, makes a ruling. And, and, you know, I mean, you heard him, heard his response to all this is, he thought this, this was, these were all good, these were all valid, these were all legal.
Yes.
You know, so I, I don't think we need anything further in writing from him, and we heard of, I mean, he came to two meetings, we sat down with a work session with him, we, we addressed these issues with him, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I heard nothing but him giving his approval legally, his legal approval of, of all these changes. He certainly didn't say anything negative that, that would have a foreseeable or obvious legal ramifications.
And the way I see it is there's lawyers on both sides, so I don't think you're ever going to get out of not having to defend it. I think the people here are feeling that all of their letters and comments, you know, probably haven't been, haven't been addressed because we haven't talked like this openly, you know. That's right.
Anybody else want, any of the board members want to speak? Okay. Well, it is 7:45. We have a public hearing call. I have the affidavit of publication from the evening sun on the 28th day of January. The public hearing is on Section 35 of the proposed zoning ordinance change, which is the procedural section of the special exception. The meat and potatoes of the zoning ordinance change, we had our public hearing on in October, October, several months ago, at the Legion, I believe it was October. So, having said that, I will declare the public hearing open and ask anyone that wishes to speak, please rise and state their name for the record and have your say.
Maybe we should make it clear that it's just on these.
Just on the, it's only, this public hearing is only on the Section 35, which is the procedures for the special exception.
Lawrence, with all due respect, the public notice in the paper does not mention solely the Section 35 as far as I, as far as I read. It's on the Local Law Number One, 2015.
Okay, may I read the public notice to you?
Okay. Yeah, I was reading it off the website, not in the paper.
This is notice, public hearing on Local Law Number One of 2015. Public notice is hereby given that there was presented to the Town Board of the Town of Oxford, New York, on July 9th, 2014, changes to the Town of Oxford revising zoning ordinance dated July 2007, and that Section 35, procedure for submitting special exception applications, was presented to the Town Board of the Town of Oxford, New York, on January 14th, 2015 as an amendment to the revised zoning ordinance. Copies are on file and may be examined at the office of the undersigned Town Clerk at Tony Lafayette Park, Oxford, New York, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Notice is hereby further given that the Town of, Town Board of Oxford will conduct a public hearing on aforesaid zoning ordinance, Local Law Number One of 2015, at the Oxford Village Hall, Town of, Tony Lafayette Park, Oxford, February 11th, 2015, commencing at 7:45, at which time all persons interested will be heard, wherever the Town Board deems to be, James Stroud Jr., Town Clerk. So it does say it, it's to Section 35.
The second portion of that public notice says that you're, you're holding a public hearing on Local Law Number One, 2015.
Doesn't it say there, for the special exceptions application? It says, Section 35, procedures for special exception.
And then the second part clearly says it's a discussion of the entire zoning laws. So you have two parts of what you just read. The first part is Section 35, the second part is the entire zoning law. If in doubt, let people discuss the entire zoning laws.
No, this, this reads, this reads as an amendment to the revised zoning ordinance. It's the next section I read here. And then down below, it says on the aforesaid zoning ordinance, Local Law, which this, this is going to be part of, Section 35 is part of the overall zoning law. To me, it says here very clearly that it's the special exception application is part of the total zoning law is going to be addressed.
The reason we came, came to this point was that the, at the former public hearing, it was brought up that this was.
Now, there, it was needed, yes. So as a reaction to that previous public hearing, we went ahead and did this.
So what you're saying is you don't really want to have public comments. Is that true?
We're having, we're, the purpose of this hearing was to have public comments on the additional amendment that was not, not the original ones that were made, that that public hearing was held.
But what you're trying to do is get out of hearing public comments.
No. Someone has public comment on the.
That's what it's boiling down to.
We had a public hearing.
Yes, we did.
On the, on the original, and we heard everyone that had something to say, they had their say. We went through that whole procedure. We're not going to go back and revisit that. We're going to address the additions to that.
Well, why don't you tell us what the addition was and make clear what it's not? Presumably, it's not the zoning laws. Tell us what we can discuss and what you want the public to be excluded from discussing, knowing full well that everybody in this room's going to be very unhappy.
Isn't it true?
If you proceed to limit it to whatever it is that you're.
Yours proceeding.
Well, I think you better read this. Don't give this to me. This is five pages long. Why don't you read this to us so we know what we can talk about? Otherwise, let us discuss the zoning laws that we've already read.
It's been posted, it's, you know, they had the opportunity to read it, they had the opportunity to, to pick it up at the, at the office. At our last meeting, we said this is what the public hearing was going to be about, so if there's comments about this, change.
Comments about what? Is it?
Why don't you hold that up, Jerry, and ask how many people have read those five pages that you want to limit this? I didn't even know it existed, and I've been in the office a half a dozen times since your last hearing.
I gave it to you the other day.
I don't have that.
Well, I would like to make a comment about the procedural changes. It's all right. My name is John Neff. And I've made a copy for each of the board members and one for the textbook. I'll give you mine on the table. Okay, this is to the Town Board regarding the proposed zoning changes. On August 13th, 2014, at this Board's first public hearing regarding the proposed zoning ordinance changes, the good people of Oxford sent a unified and unambiguous message. Gas drilling is harmful and should not be allowed anywhere in our town. At your very next meeting, the only mention of this hearing involved formulating a procedure for the permitting of those very same actions. At the October meeting, I reminded you of the concerns raised at the public hearing, respectfully urging you to address them with open dialogue. On December 16th, 2014, both the New York State Department of Health and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation sent a unified and unambiguous message to the Governor. Gas drilling is harmful and should not be allowed anywhere in our state. Almost six months have elapsed since that initial public hearing, six months. In regards to the proposed zoning ordinance changes, I wrote, "I am still waiting to hear this Board speak on the issues raised by the concerned constituents." I finally did about two minutes ago. Thank you for finally bringing it up. However, due diligence and common courtesy require that you do talk about these things. Why not proceed only with the changes that everyone can agree on, namely, the addition of Section 45 regarding telecommunications towers and Section 46 regarding noise control? There are still too many unanswered questions on the remaining changes to blindly push this thing through. Public hearings are an opportunity to learn from the people you serve. Listen to us with an open mind and remember your mission as public servants. Let us all work together to keep our community healthy, clean, and vibrant. I request this letter be included in tonight's Town Board minutes.
Anyone else like to be heard?
There's two letters, one for myself, one for my wife, and I stapled them together. If you each have a word, if they would be included in the minutes, please. Now, I want to read my wife's letter. And it concerns what you were just talking about, some, and if it starts going off base, you can stop me.
Is this, is this concerning simply these procedural changes with the planning board? Because that's the only comments about at this point in time.
The special exception issue?
Yes, yes, yes. I mean, I don't, glancing at it, I don't, I don't happen to see that.
I'll start with this. Despite repeated requests that it do so, this Board has still not requested or nor received or written opinion from either its attorney or the Association of Towns Attorneys. And on that point, you know that nothing is law unless it's written. When the landman would go around and don't recognize anything.
What does that have to do with these?
They needed their signatures.
With these procedures here? This is what we have to keep on, on task with at this public hearing. And I think Lawrence gave everyone a chance to.
You have not received a written opinion on the enforceability of oil and gas drilling and material staging areas as permitted uses by special exception. Just don't know if it's valid. The State's highest court has upheld its right to prohibit through zoning solutions, mining activities. And that again is, what you said, Lawrence, that if you'd like to protect this town, you can do it by actually prohibiting the industry. Municipal law has been settled on that. But at the same, but that same court has also clarified that if towns with zoning allow those activities as a permitted use, they do not have the legal authority to regulate them. If this Board does not receive a written legal opinion on whether by special exception would be considered regulation as defined by the New York State Environmental Conservation Law, then the residents of this town have no reason to believe the Town Board's claim that material staging area has been added as a protection and not as an invitation. Can we talk about, but not limited to, language?
No. This is, that is not part of these changes here.
Very well. Carry on.
Anyone else like to be heard?
Like to be heard, but, but you're, you're telling us that we can't be heard to talk about the, the changes in the zoning.
As we've said several times, that we had a public hearing on that, that corrected issue, 14th day of August, on those changes. The only changes that we're not, did not have a public hearing on was procedural changes, procedures for the special exception. That's what we need to.
I think there's still a question mark whether the special exception process is legal and enforceable. And, you know, I've, I've been saying this for a better part of the year, and at one of the meetings, I know that the Town Supervisor agreed that he would talk to the attorney about this, and we still haven't seen anything in writing. But I'm not exactly sure how the members of this Board can vote with a good conscience on adding material staging areas by, as a permitted use by special exception without knowing whether that special exception process is legal, valid, and enforceable. In 2008, you received a legal opinion in writing from the then-Town Attorney Roger Monaco, saying that the Association of Towns Attorney deemed that our zoning related to oil and gas drilling were. related to oil and gas drilling were invalid and unenforceable. A lot of stuff has changed since two thousand eight, but what hasn't changed is the language around the New York State Environmental Conservation Law. And that is the law that says that the state preempts a municipality's authority over the operations and processes of the oil and gas industry. Material staging areas are a very necessary part of the operations and processes of the oil and gas industry. You can put in as much detail as you want in your procedures for special exceptions, but if you are preempted from exercising that authority, then it doesn't matter how much you put in to the zoning. It will be invalid and unenforceable. I think it's really incumbent on you to get that legal opinion in writing so you know what you're voting on, that adding the permitted use will not create a vulnerable situation for this town. Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard?
Yes, this has to do with the mandate that you're giving the planning board under section thirty-five, which I really hadn't seen before, all of due respect to Jim, who I've profoundly...
I have the website.
And I got a lot, but I did not get this the first time I've seen section thirty-five. But the, what you're essentially allowing the planning board to do under section three of approval with special exception is to make a decision about the law on whether a short or a long form should be the appropriate form for that particular application. Now, that's not a responsibility that should go to the planning board. It should go to this board. And my concern is that this board, when it filled out its seeker form, the lawyer that advised you did not read the most elementary part of the seeker review procedures in the DEC, which specifically says that it's a type one, and I have in front of me what I know is being discovered tonight, and that is the seeker. A type one requires a long form. It's explicit. And you're about to pass a law which includes section thirty-five with a seeker that is illegal. And with all due respect to your attorney, you need a second opinion. And I want to submit tonight, separate from my own comments, a, uh, letter from Paul Brennan. Paul Brennan has done an enormous, there are six copies there. Paul Brennan has done an enormous amount of legal research since the zoning laws were refined and made available to the public. And as you can tell from reading this, there are severe limitations legally and hence vulnerabilities to a lawsuit that are a result of the way in which this attorney, who incidentally does not have an office and is not going to sit on the yellow pages, advised you. And Ron, I want to ask you personally a favor on behalf of Paul, who's in Chicago and regrets he cannot be here. After you read this, he would like to meet with you, Jerry Locke, anybody else on the board, and other people who have done extensive legal research on the basis of the zoning laws that you have proposed, including section thirty-five. And he has found serious, serious legal problems with it. Furthermore, I want to deal again with the responsibilities that you're giving the planning board when it comes to conflict of interest. Now, at the last meeting, I made the statement that I thought this board was being foolish by proceeding with this particular law. And the reason for that specifically, and I want to explain it so you don't think I was, and it applies to section thirty-five especially, because you're putting the planning board in the position of having legal responsibility. Now, we all know that a good portion of the people on the planning board have gas leases. There are three people on this board who have gas leases. As you know from the letter to the editor by Mary Jo Long, an attorney, on February third, the question of conflict of interest is going to arise in every case where a town board adopts gas drilling and they have people on the board who have leases. Now, at some point, I would like to discuss what that means in terms of the liability, not only of the board, which is somewhat covered by the insurance, but the individual members themselves. And it is my understanding, and I would certainly check this out before I voted for this law, that if indeed a person on a board has a gas lease and votes for laws or designates to the planning board here in section thirty-five the powers to deal with gas drilling, they may be covered by their insurance company if they win the conflict of interest suit. But if they lose, and I got this from lawyers, so you want to check me, if they lose, each individual leaseholder who voted for gas drilling is responsible personally for the legal costs of that suit, which in the case of conflict of interest will go first to the Supreme Court in Shenango County, and then it will go to an appellate court. Because whatever lawyers deal with this, whether it's NIPER or it's, uh, NRDC or it's a slouchy group, they're going to want to establish a precedent. And that's what Mary Jo Long was telling you in the letter to the editor that she wrote about conflict of interest. That's a very expensive set of legal obligations, and you will have to pay for them. And if you lose, the individual will have to pay for them. The insurance company will pay for them if you win. And that's an odious responsibility, and I felt I had to explain that to you after the last meeting when I said you should not proceed with this law. Now, to deal further with section thirty-five. If indeed the planning board proceeds with its procedure as laid out in here, and the special exceptions are not specifically laid out, what can we project will happen? If a gas drilling lease is permitted, not a hydro fracking, because hydro fracking, quite respectful to you, Lawrence, there ain't going to be no fracking in New York State, not now, not ten years now, not for twenty years now. If you want to hold a hearing or discussion on this, I've been, I've read up on it extensively for political, economic, and geological reasons, there will be no hydro fracking. But you have two gas wells already in this town that are set up for conventional vertical drilling. That's the elephant behind all of this. And I've just been very open tonight, Lawrence. Simple question. Were those two gas wells given town permits when they were drilled?
No.
No?
Because our attorney at the time told us that our, because of home rule not being, uh, accepted at the time, that our, our ordinance was not enforceable.
Excellent. Now that your home rule has been determined, how does that change legally?
We have the ability to, we have some ability to control what goes on within the town if home rule is through our zoning laws.
Okay, so let's get back to thirty-five and let's get back to the planning board's enormous responsibilities that you are designated to them. What will happen if those two wells are permitted to proceed underneath your zoning laws? Can we, can we make any prediction? Yes, we can, because we have the experience of Lebanon, twenty mi, twenty minutes north of here, that has had conventional drilling like those two wells that already exist in this town that will be covered by this zoning laws. They've had them for years. And if you'll recall, I submitted to this board, did anybody read Jim Goldsmith's, supervisor of Lebanon, Goldsmith's?
Goldstein.
Goldstein, thank you. Did anyone read these?
Yes.
Okay. Let me review to you what it will be like when those two wells are okayed underneath your zoning laws.
I think you forgot the Lebanon comment, the three minutes.
I'd like to hear more.
So would I.
Does that have to do with our, with our public hearing? Or is this a, a lesson here?
Well, what's the verdict on that? Do you want to hear what's going to happen under these laws?
This doesn't sound like, yeah, I don't think such a...
This is the section thirty-five, this is what, this is what you're designated to the planning board.
People would like to hear it at the public hearing.
This is, this is Jim Goldstein's supervisor. This was written two years ago. As a consequence of these violations and problems that were created under his zoning law, which did not ban gas drilling and which was not able to regulate, just as you're not able to regulate gas drilling, this is what happened. When he wrote this, the town had not yet banned it. As a result of this, the town had, of Lebanon has banned gas drilling because they learned if you do not ban it, you cannot regulate it, and this is what happened. One, unethical legal practices. Two, seismic trespass on private property.
Okay, I, I'm going to cut you off here because this is not...
Four, failure to consistently...
Mr. Hall, this is our meeting, and I've, you've been asked several times to be talking about the specific changes...
Okay, this is specifically under...
No, you've had your chance. Sit down.
This is under approval of special exception, section number three.
Because the, the next comment is, you'll be out of here. Now, we've gone through this, we've played that game before. So, right now, just sit down and be quiet. You've had your chance to speak about this.
I'm way in the back room. I can't see. Is this the chairman? Is this the...
Does anybody else want to hear anything more about this?
Yeah, I do.
No.
Why can't I hear? I, I just want to hear...
You're going to hurt me?
Those instructions. Is that the chairman of the meeting or, uh...
Yeah, are you the chairman of the meeting?
I am not.
Do you have, do you have a permit to get a well drilled? Do you have one in your pocket?
I asked for five minutes, no more.
You've had, you've had.
I've asked for five minutes more. No one else is going to be able to speak because you've already limited them on procedural grounds. The least you can do is let me talk about procedure of the, section number thirty-five. This is what happened. This is what happened in Lebanon. And this is, again, the, this is a letter from the supervisor of Lebanon before they banned it to the appropriate state agency. And it won't take me five minutes. Failure to consistently comply with provisions of our road repair contract agreement. The most notable of these was low-volume hydro fracking on a weekend of Labor Day holiday two years ago without prior notification of our agreement, very specific to any activity. He could not regulate that. He could not prevent delays in paying out royalties and questions regarding gas measure but activities. He could not regulate because he did not ban the unsupervised open brine storage containers, again, this is conventional drilling, it's not hydro fracking, unsupervised open brine storage containers and brine pits where the public and animals had access, deliberate puncturing of open brine pits to permit drainage of brine rather than having to arrange for disposal. Incidentally, the company that was engaging in this practice was Norse Energy, which is the same company with whom two members of this board have leases. So this is very specific. A gas well rig fire and diesel fuel spill where adjacent property owners will say they can smell the diesel and where no water testing has been done to verify there's any groundwater pollution and repeated problems with the sloughing off of hillside and sediment pollution into a vital trout stream and the Lebanon reservoir on exceptionally rainy days since the incident occurred five years ago. Dumping of sediment in violation of DEC regulations in body, uh, bodies of water or stream beds. Attempting to extract water from sources without consent or notification. Only got five more points. Significant delays in contracting with road vendors to repair town road impacts. Failure to coordinate, communicate, or cooperate with town officials on a consistent basis with regard to any and all activities that had impacts on the town's separate ongoing schedule of road maintenance program. Fourteen, misrepresenting activities relating to gas drilling at public meetings. Fifteen, near-miss accidents reported to the sheriff's office of heavy trucks that were driving too fast and in too risky a way on town and county roads. Failure to notify the highway superintendent of routes to gas wells resulted in excessive and unnecessary damage to town roads and infrastructure. Two more points. Complaints of negatively impacted water sources, foundations and property values. Eighteen, inconsistent pretesting practices of adjacent water wells. Now, you tell me how you are going to ensure that the planning board can prevent these things from happening when this article thirty-five is enacted. Thank you.
I think we're throwing it over. We want to be in your honor this...
Well, do you have anything else to do with the...
Does anyone else want to speak about section, article thirty-five with procedural changes? Okay, if not, I guess there's, there's been a motion to close the public hearing.
No move.
Sorry? Alan's move. Do you have a second? Discussion? None, all those in favor? opposed? Well, I don't think it'd be prudent to do anymore with this, uh, these changes until we get some direction. So, talk to the lawyer and see where we go from there. Okay. Um, our last month at our meeting, we had a couple vacancies, uh, zoning board of appeals. Gary, a clerk, is asked to continue for, he had, he had filled out an uninspired term and he's asked to continue for, in that spot for his own term, five years. And we had an opening on the assessment board of review. Bob Frank is no longer able to serve there, and Frank Hoffman is agreed to fill that spot. I think it's important that we keep a, a farmer on the, the review board. Okay.
Is that your appointment or do we need to approve this?
Uh, we, I think, yeah, I think we do need a motion to approve this to, because they...
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Second? Discussion? None, all those in favor? All right, I oppose. Jim, what's going on with your people?
We're keeping up with it. We're hardworking, smart, saying, I'm just for the buffers on cows and coming, five hundred ton of oil coming. We've had some breakdown, but everything's put in place, the background line, so everything's going good.
I don't have any complaints against this. We all get it. Just, uh, just type it. Okay. Okay. Uh... Okay. Okay. Uh, we got some bills tonight. Paul Pounds still...
Would it be, would it be approved to have our attorney on the next meeting? I know that we're going to limit some, we haven't gotten the bills from the first two meetings that he's attended on the work section, but we've got the, uh, prediction to do so that we can act or not act. Act or not act, we're going, we're going to be doing and go with our next meeting.
Okay. I will talk with it. Um, okay, so, got bills, a motion to pay the bills.
Make more than pay the bills.
Motion, a second, discussion? None, all those in favor? All right, opposed? Anything else?
I just, I just have a question. I see all these people here, definitely came to talk about the zoning ordinance, and, um, I think we ought to, to have some, listen to them, have some dialogue, discuss their concerns. Realize the public hearing was for the procedural... Realizing the public hearing was for the procedural, I think since the, you know, since the original public hearing, first public hearing on the changes, and the state has made their ruling, I'm not sure it's not prudent to revisit stuff. I personally wouldn't mind hearing their comments, or having some of that stuff, or...
And it's not what you think happens to go forward?
Whatever, whatever is the right thing to do. I mean, I've seen, I don't know procedurally, and I realize, you know, this, the public hearing was for this, but there's been a lot of changes, and there are a lot of people here.
Well, I, I guess, are you suggesting we do it now, or in a separate meeting?
Why can't you put it in this place where the acoustics are right for people in the audience to hear every word you say? Like the school, the auditorium, the middle school, with a microphone, everybody hears? But this is, this is hard to hear. All these tiles up here, the bank people like it quiet. We know what their position is. They want to ban it period.
If you understand that, why are you not...
Because you don't represent everybody in this town.
How are you going to do that?
Al, why don't you listen to what people here have to say to see whether we're representing...
They understand what you're saying when you're here. You people are the ones that are the vocal people, you understand that.
How about a referendum?
I asked about that at the October meeting. Was it time for a referendum? I was told no.
At this point, the state has taken care of that, haven't they?
Well, you better find out.
In my opinion, they have, but apparently, in your opinion, they haven't.
Zoning means a lot, though.
I understand that, but a material staging area also represents, it's not exclusive to the gas business.
It was a hellhole. There was traffic jams all, all over, pipes were all over. It was very, very disappointing, and it made you sick to think that happened to that village, or town, or city, whatever it is. Trucks were all over the place, and it didn't look like a happy place, like Oxford, Oxford is a happy place. And we don't need all that crap. Excuse my French.
I think it's important that we get, get the lawyers' viewpoint on this, because that's what I see, this difference of opinion, it's a difference of opinion. Are we, are we bettering ourselves, or are we opening ourselves up to something? That's what I see.
Well, let's get in here next meeting and hash that.
All right.
You know, we don't have any, we aren't necessarily into the gun as far as the changes.
No.
No.
Is there any way that we can get the people who are on the planning board to tell us what their views are on these particular things?
They passed these regulations.
They've passed them, they've discussed them?
Yes, yes. That's where they originally...
And, and, and did they discuss them in a public forum?
Yes, yes. They have a meeting every third Tuesday of each month, right here.
Lawrence, I would love to hear each member of the board say whether or not they were for or against having the gas industry here, and why? Why, why, why would it be a good thing, and what are the reasons? Or, you know, what your positions are? Just, just don't know.
I'll follow through my point. At this point, I'm, I guess I'm happy that the state did what they did. That gives us more time to see what the results are other places, and see where we stand.
Do you know if anybody on the planning board had visited any of the Pennsylvania towns or, or villages that were impacted by...
Yes, I do know they have.
They have?
Some of them have, yes.
Okay.
Did the gas people take them down?
No.
No.
I, I'd follow that up, but I'm glad also to see the state did the ban at this point in time, because for exactly Al's reasons. They're, they're fracking in 36 other states in the Union. Let them crack there for a while, and see what happens to the water supply. See how dangerous it is, see what the percentages are that they have accidents, and there are countless different, different problems. But in the, in the meantime, these regulations do nothing but protect the, the town of Oxford. Because they help us, they help us to regulate these, these material staging areas. Right now, they could come in, in a 10-acre spot right next to your house, if you've got a big open field there, they can purchase that land, and they can put a material staging area in, and the town of Oxford can't do a single thing to stop it.
It's not a permitted use, so how can they go ahead and do that? Without being challenged? They could be challenged.
I, I'm not going to debate it. I, I'll say according to our attorney and, and other sources, that, that's, that's the legal opinion that our attorney has given us. So that's what I'm going with.
Is that just one opinion, or have there been multiple legal opinions on the subjects?
There has been our town attorney, there's been the Association of Towns, giving similar types of thing, and I can't quote the sources, I know those are, I can quote our attorney, because I've talked to him recently.
You're not going to get 10 attorneys to agree anyway.
To agree on, yeah, on anything. So, so in, in that respect, I'm glad it's been delayed, so that it gives the dust time to settle and proceed, but in the meantime, these things are there to help protect our town.
Jerry, do you know that?
I mean, just, just, I can't, just one further comment, as I drive out in Western New York State, I see gas well after gas well after gas well, and I don't hear very many complaints of groundwater pollution, gas pollution, intrusion into the water table. You never hear about it out there now. We're a long ways away from out there also, so, but...
Jerry, you're 20 minutes away. Have you driven to Lebanon?
Excuse me. So, so conventional well drilling has been taking place for 100 years or better, so now you're, you were about to say something.
But I'm sure you, you understand that municipal law, as it's been settled, gives the towns, the town boards, the power to prohibit the, the process HV, the high-volume hydro fracking, through zoning law.
Yeah, yeah, through home rule.
It can be done.
Yes, yes.
You guys can do it.
Yes.
That would be complete protection.
I wouldn't choose to at this point in time.
Well, if I could say something, I would just say that knowledge is power, and if you guys take the time to get the knowledge, that it will help you make a better decision. I think in, in the opinion of the people that are against it, where of the viewpoint that you can ban it, or you can allow it, you cannot regulate it, and you have a different opinion. Let's get the facts and find out what's right, and go from there, and make a good informed decision, and not just plow through and, and get something in because we're being stung.
I, I'm another citizen in the back of the room, and I want to compliment the board. I've been coming to board meetings two and a half years, and I think this is the best meeting I've been to. This is the first time I could hear the chairman, the supervisor, more than 10 feet away. This is the first time that four of the five members have spoken up and add to the conversation, the first time in my memory, and I think tapes would support that. And I, I think there's been a little bit of dialogue, which has been notably lacking in town board meetings. And I came here tonight, recently influenced by this, Mary Jo Long's article on ethics, and I was going to, I was going to make the case for local Oxford Board Code of Ethics, which we do not have. We have a cobbled thing from the county and so on. But this situation in Sanford, New York, where the supervisor made a quarter million dollars by sitting out on one meeting, but being in all the other negotiations and so on, and gobbling up the money, is a fair warning for us. I know, let's see, one, two, three, well, three of the board members quite well, and all five, in fact, John, I would say I know John fairly well. I, I would, I would vouch anywhere for the honesty and integrity of every one of these board members. We still need a code of ethics. We still need your transparency and openness on issues. I haven't heard much in two and a half years of open declarations of your position. I don't know how you read them, but it's pretty much, you know, a statement finally from, from Lawrence, the supervisor. And so, I guess I'm saying things that, that the local gag rule here sort of prohibits me from, but at any rate, I recommend, as part of this moving forward, the beginning work on the, on the local code of ethics. By the way, I'd like to mention to Jerry and, and his partner there, that I believe that communications to have any effect between the lawyer and the town board have to be directly with the supervisor. I mean, you guys can talk, and you can have a meeting, but what he's told you has little legal effect on the town board unless it's communicated to the supervisor. I could be wrong on that.
It was communicated. Ronnie and I and the attorney had a...
In writing?
Well, the conclusions of that meeting were...
It either was writing or it wasn't, Jerry.
The conclusions of the meeting were in writing, yes. And that was the application that, that he compiled with our, with our input, the three of us, and the concerns that, that addressed each part of that, yeah, that, that wasn't, that wasn't writing.
Thank you. This isn't all of my differences here, but I think this has been a good meeting tonight, the, the best I've seen.
There's a little hang-up right now in getting the electronic version to Jim, so that he can, from the lawyer to Jim, so that we can get it all distributed and everything. But, but yeah, that, that, that wasn't, it wasn't in writing. Ron and I have, have seen it. I do not have a copy of the 10 or 12, 15 concerns that were, that were listed there. The rest is on, we do have copies on, so we're, we're in the process of getting that.
Thank you.
We're all set to go forward for the 11th of March. Our other business, I guess we proceed to the chairman of town.